Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm actually going to ask all of you to stand back up because we are privileged to have Rebecca Gutierrez here tonight to perform the National Anthem. Rebecca is a senior at Nishamani High School and the recent winner of the Middletown Township's 20th Annual Teen Talent Show. Becca is a Girl Scout, a member of the high school concert choir, select choir, and high voice choir. She is also a member of the marching band and performs in the school's musicals. She has just finished her final high school performance last week in Nishamani High School's musical production of Young Frankenstein, in which she played the lead role of Inga. This is her second time singing for us over the years, so please stand for Rebecca Gutierrez.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, Rebecca. That was fantastic, as always. Before we move on, and I am going to ask everyone to stand up one more time. Tonight, we are recognizing a colleague and a dear friend that we lost, and that is Supervisor Anna Payne. And first and foremost, if everybody could please stand, and we'd like to have a moment of silence for Supervisor Anna Payne. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation that we would like to show honoring Anna Payne. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that. Anna really did do it all. Her life, as we all know, was far too short, but without question, she accomplished more in her short life than I think most people do in much longer lives. She faced more challenges and obstacles than anyone ever should, but she faced and conquered those challenges with grace and dignity. And the thing that just always stuck with me about Anna was just her unbelievable selflessness. Her commitment and her dedication to her community and to helping other people. Anna knew that she may not necessarily be able to help herself. She lived with the knowledge that her time here might be limited, yet she worked tirelessly to help other people. Everything she did, her activism, her public service, her charitable efforts, fundraising, all of it. It was all done with this awareness and this acceptance that it may not help her at all. That it wasn't going to do anything for her, but that all of her efforts might make a difference to other people. And that is just something I really, really admire, and I'm going to miss her terribly. We were just, we were really privileged to have known Anna. We were really fortunate to have her as a colleague, but more importantly, we were blessed to have her as a very dear friend. And I think all of us tonight are just really struggling to imagine a world without Anna in it. So I'm going to give my colleagues an opportunity to say a few words if they'd like to. I'll start with Supervisor Hannah.
I want to start by saying Anna was the first person that I ever campaigned for and started knocking doors for. And she was an inspiration. She really was like a shining star. I think of her like a supernova, an extraordinary force that illuminated the lives of those around her. And when a supernova burns out, it leaves behind all of these things that enrich the lives of others. So that was Anna. One of the other things that I wanted to recognize and celebrate her life, she also initiated the Middletown Township HRC. Again, she she served others, and she wanted to help others. So tonight, I would like to take a moment to reaffirm the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors unwavering commitment to continuing the legacy of Anna Payne through our Human Relations Commission, our HRC, which is, which she proposed in 2020. I remember reading in the newspaper, I wasn't even thinking about doing anything yet, but I read this from her in the newspaper. "A human relations commission is a critical step toward making our community equitable and accessible." She said, "My vision for the commission is to serve as a catalyst in our civic duty to combat injustice and advocate for residents who are marginalized and discriminated against. These members of our community now have a voice for change and a seat at the table." We need that so much right now. "The establishment of the HRC is of paramount importance in our efforts to address discrimination and promote inclusion within our community. The mission of the HRC is clear: We are dedicated to fostering an environment that values diversity and actively fights against discrimination based on age, race, gender, identity, and other critical factors. This mission aligns seamlessly with the core values upheld by the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. As we envision the future of Middletown Township, we see a community where diversity is celebrated and inclusion is a priority, a safe and equitable environment for all residents. The HRC plays a vital role in realizing this vision through its commitment to conducting public trainings, educational sessions, and various community activities designed to foster understanding and respect among all residents. The purpose of the HRC extends beyond education. It also involves collaboration with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission to address complaints related to discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Key objectives include promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion through community engagement, providing resources and support for those facing discrimination, and educating our community on the importance of human rights. We are excited about the upcoming events and initiatives designed to achieve these objectives. We continually hold Anna in our thoughts while we plan these events. We will have regular public trainings and community outreach programs. I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce our current HRC members or acknowledge their membership as they're not here, they serve, to represent the diverse fabric of our community and are committed to this important work. Alexandra Kabak, who's the chairperson, David Tilly, he's the vice chair, our new member Kate Anderson, Donna Fanboyle, David Devore, Suzanne Hargadon, James Henderson, and our township liaison Nicole Tenner. I know Anna would like all of you to be involved in that. If you can't come to the meetings, maybe you can watch them, maybe you can support the HRC because she cared about all of our community. It takes place on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Your participation is encouraged, and we welcome your feedback and ideas. In conclusion, let us reaffirm our commitment to Anna Payne's legacy and the ongoing work of the Human Relations Commission. Together, we can create a more inclusive Middletown Township. I encourage all residents to get involved and support the mission of the HRC and to help Anna's legacy live on.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Kane, did you want to say something?
I was just, I'd just like to know, you know, getting to know Anna over the past three years, I'd say the biggest thing that lingers and how I will remember her is her kindness and the passion that she had for this work. She was one of the first board members that reached out to me. And instead of, you know, talking about things that we may not agree on, she always looked to things that we would agree on. So again, I will always keep with me that kindness that she had and the passion for things that really drove improvement for the community. Because as I saw her over the past three years, the things that she was most passionate about was each of the projects that really impacted those that needed it in this community. I will miss her.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Corporal?
I met Anna in 2018, but I really got to know her and become friends when we ran for office together. I used to joke, I always hated talking after Anna. She might have been a lot younger than me, but she was really good at what she did, and she taught me in a lot of ways. This is definitely much harder than talking after Anna. Everybody knows Anna suffered from CF, and she knew that that meant that she might not have a long life to live. I know she told me, you know, when I met her, and, but that never stopped her. She kept on chasing her dreams, and she had not only chasing her dreams, but her fight was not for herself, but it was for other people and for what she believed in, and that is really true. Sorry. Even when Anna got cancer, that didn't stop her. In fact, I think that made her more determined than ever to fight and do whatever she could in the short time that she had left. She definitely, she just served others, and she really wanted to find a cure for other people and work as hard as she could for that and spread the word about CF. I remember when she was sick even, she was still fundraising and doing everything. She was sitting in your house, making thousands of baskets and putting them together. Because that's just what she did behind the scenes, and maybe everybody didn't know that she did all that. But her passion and, her passion was to help other people, and she was fierce in that determination. And I think that's what everybody's going to remember about Anna. It's definitely what I'm going to remember about Anna, and I'm going to, you know, keep her memory and fight really hard to help everybody in her memory. Last thing I want to say is, besides all of that and all that she did for everybody, and I feel like she did more in her short life than most people do when they live a ripe old age, she was happy and she was, lived a good life, she lived a fierce life, and I'm going to miss her friendship and her laugh. And hopefully, everybody will go out and do something for the community, for other people, and just remember that that's what Anna would want and do it for her. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Ms. Teoli-Coals, did you want to say something?
When I met Anna, she was the youngest elected official I ever worked with. So it was really interesting to get to know her in that capacity of someone so much younger. I can tell you immediately, the very first thing that I sensed in her was this pureness of spirit and really a sense that anything is possible, and it just radiated from her. I was really honored to get to work with her on setting up the HRC. Sadly, when Anna was diagnosed with cancer, it was something that she and I got to share. Being a cancer survivor was something that she and I connected on. Never felt sorry for herself, never complained, and in fact, did the opposite. Utilized the opportunity to go out and advocate for the sharing of the knowledge that there's a connection between CF and colon cancer. When many people would sit and feel sorry for themselves, she actually took this thing that she was going through. She had a sense of humor, and she advocated so that others that came after her would be impacted. And I am deeply impacted by her positive spirit. She and I shared trinkets over the years when she was sick, and the last thing she gave me was this amethyst bracelet, which is positive energy. She sent me a thank you letter and happened to be wearing this the day that she passed. And so I feel her spirit all around me, and I will say, even at the end, I saw her in late December, even facing the end, she had that positive spirit. So her legacy is going to live on in this community, and I'm really honored to have known her and just can't say enough about what a good person she is and how much she'll be missed.
Thank you, and thank all of you. I know this is, this is difficult, so I appreciate everyone saying a few words. And I want to thank everybody who's here tonight. I know there's a lot of folks that came here specifically in honor of Anna, and we appreciate that, and we know Anna's family appreciates that. Incredibly, we have to move on with our agenda. The work of local government keeps going, and so we have to move on, and we've got a number of things on the agenda. So we are going to move forward with our meeting tonight and take care of business. I will take a short recess, just five minutes, just to allow folks to take a breath. And if anybody who was here, just to honor Anna, wants to step out because they're not interested in hearing about land development, I'll give you a moment to leave. But I want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank my colleagues for being here and saying a few words. I want to thank the township staff, Ms. Teoli-Coals, Liz Martin, our Public Information Officer. I think Ashley Casey maybe was involved in putting together that video montage and all those great pictures, which, they showed just a sample of the things that Anna accomplished. I mean, I think everybody knows everything that she has, that she has done. It's really unbelievable. So it was great to see some pictures highlighting some of the things that she did. So I appreciate everybody putting that together. And I'll just echo what my colleague said, which is, I think the best and only real way we can honor Anna is to carry out her passion, her kindness, her empathy towards other human beings, and her willingness to do things that were solely for the benefit of other people in her community, which I just think is such a rare thing in this day and age. And I'm certainly going to try my best to carry on her legacy, and I know my colleagues are too. And I would encourage everybody else out there listening to do the same thing. So thank you, everybody. We're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, so we will continue on with our agenda. Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Also in attendance, Township Manager Ms. Twully-Coals, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Barterelli, Police Captain Pete Feeny, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Rec Paul Capera, Director of Finance Laura Huckelbridge, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, March 10, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Special items, we have a proclamation for Black History Month, and it reads as follows. "Whereas February is observed each year as Black History Month, focusing on the contributions of African-Americans in our nation's history from the first enslaved people brought over from Africa to the African-American leaders and advocates of today; and whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history; and whereas the observance of Black History Month honors how African-Americans have been instrumental in shaping our nation's history and culture, and their contributions have helped to define the character and strength of our country; and whereas Black History Month acknowledges the countless obstacles that have been overcome by African-Americans to obtain freedom, equality, and justice, and encourages the continued fight against systemic racism and discrimination; and whereas the African-American Museum of Bucks County, now located here in Middletown Township, honors the rich legacy of African-American history and culture through traveling exhibits, public events, and educational programs, and has been recognized as Bucks County's official archive of African-American history; and now therefore do we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month." And that brings us to the consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of February 18, 2025 bills list in the amount of $2,937,039.54. B, consideration of approving the January 13, 2025 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. C, consideration of approving Resolution Number 25-08R, Appointing Finance Director and Assistant Township Manager to the Bucks County Tax Collection Committee. Item D, consideration of approving Financial Security Release Number 1 Final. For all slide items completed for the North Site- Release Number One final for all site items completed for the North Site Warehouse at 1600 East Old Lincoln Highway, S/LD Number 22-5, in the amount of $5,970,854.18. And Item E, consideration of approving Financial Security Release Number Eight, for site items completed for the Oxford Valley Mall Apartments, that is S/LD Number 20-68, in the amount of $33,229. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items as read.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries four zero. Next on the agenda is discussion of an application for a text amendment request. WB Homes, this is 1492 Woodburn Road, Levittown, PA 19057, former Knights of Columbus property in the P Professional zoning district.
Good evening. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of WB Homes. This matter, as you indicated, is one that we initially presented to the board a month or more ago, and most recently with your planning commission. Tonight, the stated purpose is to, for the board to consider, consider and adopt an ordinance text amendment to allow for additional uses in the P Professional zoning district where this particular property on Woodburn Road is located. Chris Cannavon, the President of WB, can give you a quick overview again. Recognizing that we did a more full presentation in January, we'll give you the Cliff Notes version tonight in advance of any formal consideration. So, Chris?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As we had discussed at the previous hearing, we are the equitable owners of the property formerly occupied by the Knights of Columbus, just for reference purposes, it showed on the aerial up here. We had approached the township and have a proposal for an amendment to your P Professional District that would allow for townhome uses, residential uses, in the P Professional with two options. One is the buy right option, which requires a minimum of 10 acres, we do not meet that. And one would be for three and a half acres, but with an attainable housing option. The attainable housing option would require 20%, a minimum of 20% of the units to be attainable as defined within the ordinance. And that would be units that could be sold to households that are at 100% of the county average median income or less. And you are required under the ordinance to work with a third party government agency or nonprofit agency that is acceptable to Middletown Township. So Middletown Township needs to approve who that is through a conditional use application. We have, and I'm fortunate to have with me this evening Florence Kwachik from Habitat for Humanity of Bucks County, who is our designated partner and has worked hand in hand with us to try to develop this presentation. I believe there was a two-page flyer that was passed up to you. I'm not sure if it made it all the way down past your, Mike, past you for your colleagues. And really, it's just a brief understanding on the one side of Habitat for Humanity and their mission, which I think many of you are very familiar with. Florence would be happy to answer any questions with regards to that. And then the other side is just a summary of the project that we've proposed that would meet the ordinance. It's 34 townhomes, 28 of them would be market rate townhomes built and sold by WB Homes. Six units would be townhomes that we would convey to Habitat. We would build the units. Habitat would be the entity that would be responsible for finding the appropriate households to purchase those. They would also be the long-term guarantor to make sure that they stay attainable, not just for the first owner, but for all future owners through their land trust model, and would also be responsible for guaranteeing that they are sold to the households that meet the ordinance requirements based on the average median income. At the bottom of that flyer, I note a number of examples of occupations that would fall within the targeted average median income, again, to meet this attainability. Some people use the term workforce housing idea, just to name a few, and not to list all of them because they're in front of you. Firefighters, school psychologists, physicians assistants, plumbers, software developers, paramedics, transit police, just to name a few, would all be people that have average incomes that would fall within that category and are just missing out on that new homeownership at the market rate. So with that, Florence is here to answer any questions as well. We'd be happy to take any of those questions, but we'd ask that you would consider adoption of the text amendment that would allow us to move to the next step, which is a full-fledged conditional use hearing where we would present all of the evidence and documentation of how we comply with the ordinance terms and how we would have a, our relationship with Habitat through a memorandum of understanding that would guarantee the attainable units.
Thank you. Did you have any presentation that you wanted to provide, or you're just here for questions?
I'm here for questions.
Okay. Well, I, I'll just make a comment first, which is that this accomplishes two, I think, action items, goals, perhaps. One is dealing with the P Professional District, which has become a difficult situation for lots of municipalities, and we are no exception. The other thing, and this is just, could not be more appropriate, given the circumstances tonight, and the supervisor Anna Payne that we just honored, it deals with this attainable housing issue, which was really a passion of hers and something that she fought for. And this idea that homeownership is out of reach for so many people in this community. And the fact that on the night that we honor her, we're, have the opportunity to consider something partnering with Habitat to try to provide housing, attainable housing for workers in our communities, I think is wonderful. So having said that, though, I will open it up to questions from any of my colleagues. Thank you.
I had a question. How do you choose those that will get this housing? Is there, like, I'm sure there's more applications than houses available. So what is the process that Habitat uses to choose those that will be in the homes?
Sure. So as you're, you know, you're definitely right. There's much more, many more applications than we have homes. The last, last round that we had, we had three homes available, and we had over 40 qualified households that applied. And so we go through, they go through a very rigorous process in terms of checking income, availability, the fact that they have to live or work in Bucks County currently, the fact that they're ready to pay a mortgage. In a very simplistic terms, Habitat's model is the fact that in Bucks County, there are many people that can afford to pay a mortgage, just not enough of a mortgage. And so that's what we're looking for. We're looking for households that can afford to pay a mortgage that have a need. And a need in Bucks County, especially the last couple of years, have meant that households are doubled up, tripled up, living in really tight circumstances, living in rental accommodations that are much more than 30% of their income, are living in places where there's mold, there's rodents, and things like that. So we take their application. We, of course, make sure, first of all, that they have the income to be able to support owning a home in the future. And then we look through, do they have a need? And we have actually a committee that comes together and determines the people, the families or households of most need.
And then you said they had to be residents of Bucks County.
Or work in Bucks County.
Or work in Bucks County. Is there any consideration that's given, you know, to Middletown Township residents, given that it's going, these are going to be built within Middletown Township?
So we haven't done anything like that in the past, but that's certainly something we can talk about.
Other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I know Anna was passionate about this. We spoke often about the need for working class families to have an opportunity to own homes. It's very hard for working class families to do that nowadays. And this is an opportunity for us to help in that situation. And I agree, Middletown Township residents, I'm looking at some of these occupations, and these are occupations of families that live in this community, that definitely are looking for homes. So I'm excited to see this come to fruition.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree. This has been something that I've talked about for a long time. And I know Anna was passionate about this as well. Attainable housing is really becoming difficult in Bucks County and Middletown especially. And, you know, think about our children and how they're going to be able to afford to live in our community. And that's something that we all want to see, people staying here and families, you know, we love our community. We want to, people to come here and stay here and be able to afford living here. I would definitely like to see even more of this happening. And I'm hoping that this is, you know, the start of something and that we can see more attainable housing and more partnerships with maybe Habitat in the future.
That's great. And if I, if I could add, that was actually spoken about. Thank you so much for all of your comments. In terms of, you know, it sounds like, okay, we're filling a need right now for the town, the townhomes that will be at WB Homes site. But the beauty that was mentioned before of our land trust model, since every, since November of 2022, every home that we sell in Bucks County is under the land trust model, a shared appreciation model, which means that Habitat, first of all, holds ownership of the land for 99-year lease, renewable. And when the family or household goes to sell that house in the future, they have to sell it to another income-qualified homeowner. Because we found even as Habitat, over the past years, we've, we've sold over 132 homes in the county since we started back in 1990. Even Habitat couldn't afford to buy back the homes that some of our families had. And so we realized that there's going to be a problem in the long term. And so with our land trust model, we're going to ensure that there's always going to be permanent affordability in the future. And it also is very positive for corporations, individuals, and grants to go into these homes because it's going to be forever affordable.
I just had a couple of questions on the actual ordinance. If we wanted to move on to those, that'd be great. One of the things that I was looking at, it's, right now, the professional zone for a minimum of 40% open space, 20% building coverage, and 40% maximum impervious. But what this ordinance does is it removes those, those higher requirements. So it reduces open space to 30%. It increases impervious to 55 and increases the building coverage to 30, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, again, we're, we're allowing for more coverage, more density for that attainable housing.
Correct.
I think one, that's, that's the piece where, you know, I know, I know I've heard from residents, and keeping open space and doing what we can to keep, you know, the suburbs looking like the suburbs is probably the hardest time I have with this ordinance, is, you know, not willing to give up open space for, you know, even something as nice as attainable, because I think that's something to be protected as well. So unfortunately, I'm probably not going to be on the side of this one, just because, you know, I think open space is extremely important, and I want to keep that as, as much as I possibly can in the township. And that is what I've heard feedback over and over again from residents, is that, you know, keeping the density down and keeping the open space high.
I would just say, I think, with all due respect, it's a bit misguided, because you're not talking about a park, you're talking about P Professional zoning district land. So this is land that could be used to build offices, professional buildings. This is, to characterize it as open space, I just think is a little bit inaccurate. And so I appreciate the argument, and certainly we hear from residents that have concerns about density. And so we have to make judgment calls about that. But I think that figuring out a viable use for what has quickly become obsolete P Professional zoning land, obviously, if there was an option for the township to buy it all and turn it into green space as open space, that would be wonderful. But certainly, that's not economically viable for the taxpayers of this township. And so I think that using that land in order to provide affordable housing to the working men and women of this township is a noble and suitable use for, again, what is becoming obsolete professional office space. The world has changed. Office space is no longer desirable as it once was, and that's what this land is. But are there any other questions or comments from any other supervisors regarding the ordinance?
I just want to add, I think it's a great opportunity for people to have access to building wealth. It's very hard to do that now, working paycheck to paycheck. And not everybody can live on a lot of green land and open space. They just want a home for their families. And this is a very responsible and respectable way to do it for our community. Thank you.
I just have one comment about the process, just so we're, everybody is on the same page. If we're fortunate enough tonight to have the board support the ordinance, the next step is for us to generate the land development plan in pursuit of the plan. That plan, or the ordinance, that plan would be accompanied by the conditional use application, which Chris referred to. So we're all going to have another opportunity to vet the plan and talk about the merit of the conditional use that would accompany it. And to the comment made by the supervisor about the balance between open space and this thing, I think the chairman is correct in the sense that we're talking about a piece of property that the market has already decided is unproductive, because it can't be used for the zoned purpose it has now. So I think it's a really elegant solution to return to some productivity and the tax rolls, a property that has long been vacant and candidly abused for many years. And I think it's a real opportunity to marry a really noble idea, as you said, with an opportunity to return it to productive use. So I think everybody benefits. And the argument may have more traction in a different piece of ground, but I think in this particular situation, I think it's a really elegant solution that we all should be proud of. And I think we should all look for other opportunities to see if we can replicate it elsewhere, because it's a really good idea. And Habitat really will benefit from it, so.
I think we don't want to see empty buildings. I understand the concept of open spaces, and surely we, we want to have open space in our township, but we also want attainable housing, and we want to, we don't want to see empty buildings in our township, because that's an eyesore, and it's, it's not a good thing to have in our township.
And I will say, I, I really like the development that you've put in front of us. It's just, we're expanding this to the additional, all of the professional zone, which is essentially all up and down Woodburn Road. So again, I'm, I'm kind of looking out for, and more, my comments are around the amount of building that will occur versus where we are today. One of the things that I've done as I've, as these zoning has come towards me, one after the other, is, is this going to be a better usage? And is it going to give us the same type of impervious, open space building coverage as it's currently zoned? And that's kind of how I, I've gone about these decisions. And that's what I'll continue to do.
And Mr. Esposito, Mr. Kessler, this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission?
Yes, it did receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission. It also went to the Bucks County Planning Commission, who provided a favorable letter of review. Just for the record purposes, it was also advertised in the Bucks County Courier-Times on February 4th and February 11th, as required.
Thank you. Is there anything else we need to do procedurally, or just a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if nobody else has any questions, I can accept a motion regarding, this would be, what's the ordinance number?
Approving the ordinance.
Approving ordinance number 25-01, right? Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 25-01.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Any questions or comments from the public?
Eric Bruno, 79 Sweetcom. Yeah, Mike, I just find your arguments to be, just a failure of second order thinking. And I find myself, once again, agreeing with Dana, which makes me wonder if I should even switch my political side, because she just has all the right answers usually. And I just, I don't get it. Like, you have an opportunity here of a complaint that we do all the time to stop a complaint. We're talking about second order thinking here on, you know, schools, water usage, water management, which we're going to talk about in a moment, right? And other, you know, grid issues, whatnot. I know that we've had a couple of power issues with the winds yesterday. Red Rose Gate was out of power for two months, or I'm sorry, two days, 18 hours overnight. I just, I just don't, I just don't get it. But, I mean, I know how you guys are going to vote, so I actually have some questions for you, if you don't mind. so I actually have some questions for you, if you don't mind. The, the candidates are the, does Habitat have like a mortgage program for, a specific mortgage program? And can you provide some details on that? At them, kind of, I'm in that industry, so I'd just like to know what the details are, you know, DTIs, what, what expected LTVs, et cetera.
Okay. So in general, Habitat has, we do have our own mortgage program where we provide a mortgage, but that's usually to households that are 40 to 60% of the median family income. That's not going to apply here. These are going to be households that are earning-
Forty-eight thousand, right?
Right. Average, well, averaging more, averaging about 100%.
Which is 48,000, right?
I don't know the number. Okay, we, we base our thinking on the fact that it's going to be a family or a household. Number-wise, that's going to average about four people in a whole household. But in any event, those households are going to go and get a mortgage at a bank. And they can afford-
So it's going to be public market, is the expectation?
Mm-hmm. And they're, they're going to get a mortgage somewhere between 125 to 200,000 of a mortgage on a value of a home that's much more. And that's, that's where Habitat comes in and earns and raises the money for the balance.
Yes, but as you, as you may know, when you have a mortgage, and typically, and every single mortgage company I've ever worked for, I might have MLS, I have an MLS, just a second. So you are at, you are either using the lower of the value of the home or the appraised value. So you're not going to be able to use that equity that Habitat, unless Habitat's going to gift that, 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 that value in equity. Is that what the plan is?
No, we don't have a gift of equity.
Okay, so it's, so it's going to be at 200,000 is what you're going to sell these for, let's, assumably. And they're going to have to, so they're going to have to put down anywhere from 15,000 or so?
Somewhere around there. Yeah, I'm not looking at the numbers right now.
They're looking at MIP, if they're going to go with an FHA mortgage. Okay. Okay. You've answered my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One last question. Where are you from?
Myself?
Yes.
Our offices are in North Wales, Pennsylvania, and I live in Harleysville, Pennsylvania.
And where are you from?
Newtown.
Okay. So relatively close, I guess. Instead of having, you know, like we had a little bit ago with those people from Darby, who were trying to come in and put in 160 townhomes or whatever it was. So at least that's a little bit closer. I do, I do appreciate that. But still, you guys have an opportunity. I got to agree with Dana again. Good luck.
Any other public questions or comment? Yes?
Good evening. Gil Tebado, Paxton Lane in Langhorne. I have volunteered with Habitat for Humanity for several years, and it's a great organization. But for those that were not at our, at this meeting last month, I would appreciate knowing how many homes are going to be, are projected to be built on that plot of land where Knights of Columbus is. I know there, I think it was six that were Habitat homes. And what about the other homes that are proposed?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and they'll be selling for about, any ideas?
I don't know. Chris, do you know what the market rate would be?
I think if they were going to go on the market today, they'd be in the $550,000 range.
Single homes?
Townhomes.
Townhomes. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment or questions? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board. Lance Sager, 98 Queen Lily Road. Ms. Kane, you said that this ordinance change would affect every professional business on Woodburn Road?
Every professional zone, yes.
So if the church across the street decides to sell with all that land?
No, it only depends, it has to be a certain acreage. I think, Mr. NS, we went through this earlier today. I think there's about six properties that this, the attainable housing would, would, would be part of.
Okay. So I think that's a pretty broad stroke for a board to be considering, when I think me and a lot of other people would consider attainable housing to be something. I don't know if a local board, if it's your job or your area to fix those issues. I think your job, frankly, is to consider the citizens that live in this district, that have to deal with the ramifications of these decisions. So we talked about, you know, Habitat for Humanity. We're talking about six houses out of 34? Great. It's almost like window dressing, so that these two guys can make money who, by the way, don't live in Middletown Township. Their kids or grandkids don't have to deal with the ramifications of additional kids in our schools. So when we talk about, oh, great, we're going to put these houses up for firefighters and law enforcement and teachers, okay? But every other citizen in this township has to deal with the additional kids, by the way, and are already overcrowded schools, and we just opened a new one. So what about the citizens that already live here? Do we even consider those, or are we just going to continue on with our political activism and say, hey, we, we really want to address attainable housing, when realistically is, like, everybody's had to work to buy their home? I understand it's difficult. It was difficult for me. I'm sure it was difficult for everybody in this room. Okay? But we've got an issue right now with traffic on Woodburn Road and in the rest of Middletown, and we haven't even built the houses that you've approved, that most of the citizens disagree with already. Chester County, or Chester Township today blocked Exton Mall from being built by instituting an ordinance to stop additional housing, additional density. But this board, not necessarily you, Ms. Kane, but this board continues to build and continues to want to build, when other townships are heeding the advice of their citizens. How does that work? Are you representing the citizens? Or are you doing what you feel like is appropriate? Your personal decisions.
I do talk to a lot of citizens. And like you said, it's very hard to buy houses now. There are ranchers going for six, $700,000. Five years ago, that was not a thing. There are people graduating from college with a lot of debt. They can't buy homes. There are people who are working very hard, multiple jobs, trying to buy homes. Decent people who live in our community, who are trying to be a part of our community and stay in our community. I want those people in our community. I want them to have an opportunity. We have a lot of land right now that needs to be rezoned, yes. There are some things that are happening when it comes to construction and development that we really, we didn't have a say in. We kind of got on this board and it was there. We are being fair, and we are thinking of all of our community members, not just the people who are worried about their schools being too crowded and other people moving in and other people making money. This is an opportunity, actually, for six hard-working families to have an opportunity to build wealth and be a part of our community. I want those kind of people in my community. I want to be in a community with those types of people. That's who I want to represent. I think it's unfair for you to speak for everybody when that is not everybody.
Yeah, that's my biggest criticism and why I really disregard a lot of your comments, because you come in here and act like you're speaking on behalf of the community and you know what everybody wants. This is what, we're not representing the community because this is how you feel. But how you feel is not how I feel, and I live in this community. And it's not how my colleagues feel who live in this community. And we talk to residents every single day who don't feel the way you feel. So I'm sorry you don't agree with our decision, but you don't speak for Middletown Township. You don't. And we were elected by the residents of this township to make decisions, and that's what we are doing. If you don't agree with them, I understand that. I mean, I, I don't expect everybody to agree with every decision we make, but I feel like this is a good pragmatic decision to deal with an obsolete zoning district, to make it productive. And if we can at the same time provide attainable housing for working families, then I'm going to do that every time. So I think this is a great decision, and I'm sorry you don't agree with it. I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm just voting on things that I feel are the right way to vote on things.
And to be clear, we didn't open a new school. They, the school was moved from one place to another, just.
Okay. And just to clarify, and yes, I may be speaking on my behalf, okay? But there are many other citizens, if you are aware, social media does exist, and there are many other citizens that feel the same way as myself. I think Ms. Kane has referenced that. I think you guys have referenced that in regards to the density. So to, to act as if I'm just saying, hey, this is my opinion. No, I come here and speak because I have the time, which I do have to take away from my family. So to say I disregard because, whatever, this is not just my opinion. You have a bunch of constituents that disagree with you. Okay?
We, we completely understand there's going to be constituents that disagree, and there's going to be some that agree with us. Social media isn't the place to be getting your people's point of view. I mean, there's a lot of nonsense on social media. I just found out we make $190,000, you know? So it's, you know, people can say all kinds of things on social media. What they should be doing is contacting us, emailing us, asking us, instead of the nonsense that's going on on social media. I think that's a big lesson everybody should be learning.
Any other public comments or questions? All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carries for one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Three-one.
Three-one, sorry. Forced to have it. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation regarding the Shady Brook subdivision and land development. This is for 927 Stony Hill Road in the age-qualified community district. This is a presentation only. There's not going to be a vote on this particular presentation tonight. Yes?
Good evening. Joe Morrissey of Fox Lane Homes and I are here tonight to talk to you about a proposal for a portion of Shady Brook Farm. We most recently appeared several weeks ago at your planning commission to make a similar presentation. Tonight's introduction of the project is nothing more than that. We are not here tonight seeking any type of vote. We are here to share with you the information we shared with your planning commission. Before Joe provides the overview, I would say, just so everyone is aware, that Joe and others have been very active in meeting with the various communities that surround the site that we're going to talk about tonight, and through those meetings has already received the wealth of comments, concerns, other information that we are, have attempted and will continue to include in any type of plan that ultimately is presented for this board for consideration. So Joe's meetings with the neighbors are ongoing. He has others already scheduled after tonight, but we wanted to provide this board with the opportunity to have the same information we shared with your planning commission 10 days ago, and updated by Joe tonight with discussions he's had and thoughts about the plan he's had since the feedback we received from the planning commission. So with that as background, I'll have Joe, who I know you all know, reintroduce himself and talk about the plan that's in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. John Rathon, who's with Fox Lane, is just going to hand out 11 by 17 of the two PowerPoints, just so you have something a little bit closer. So first off, just, just want to say our condolences for Anna. Obviously, we've got a chance to work with her a little bit over the last couple of years. So very sorry and sad for your loss. Just some kind of overview and give you a little bit of kind of backdrop on it. This is kind of the, the kind of overview. So Fox Lane is, is partnering with Envision Land Use. Envision Land Use is under agreement with the Flemings to pretty much buy, you know, the, the part in Middletown and then also the part in Lower Makefield. We're in agreement with Envision Land Use on just the 53 acres in Middletown Township. So just to kind of spread them out and, and, you know, if you have any questions afterwards, I think the Lower Makefield stuff, that stuff that we're thinking, when we come back the next time, hopefully in the next like six to eight weeks, we'll go into a lot more detail on that. But we just wanted to get the Middletown plan in front of you, so you have a chance to, to kind of touch and feel it and see it. A little bit of background on, on Fox Lane. Local builder, offices in Fort Washington. Our first office was, was in Warrington. Been around about eight years. Will build 100, you know, semi-custom homes in the Philadelphia suburbs, anywhere from Harleysville to Newtown to Doylestown to Blue Bell, Warrington, Lehigh Valley, just a little bit everywhere. We also have divisions in suburban Pittsburgh, coastal Delaware, and then we just opened up a division in Indianapolis. But our kind of bread and butter is semi-custom, so probably a level above a Toll Brothers, but just underneath, like kind of a high-end custom builder that might take, you know, 16, 18 months to, to build a home. So with that, John, you got that. The little bit of background and kind of how we, how we got here. John Rathon, who I kind of introduced earlier, and Gia Raffielli, who's our in-house counsel, we were part of the approval process for the last three years of Stone Farm. For those of you that remember Stone Farm, you know, the first probably six or seven years were really challenging. The last three years, we had a lot of really good meetings with the township, a lot of really good meetings with the, with the neighbors. And then after, you know, a year and a half, two years, and going through all the plans and back and forth, we felt we came up with a plan that, sitting down around the room with township supervisors, staff, neighbors, everybody felt really good about. And the ultimate, what people were looking for and driven a lot by the neighbors, but then also what the township wanted was less traffic, less school-age kids, and as much open space as we can get. And I think on a lot of different levels, Stone Farm was able to do that. So then when we came to Shady Brook, or what we're calling Farms Edge at Shady Brook, we kind of had a lot of knowledge from everything that we went through, you know, over the last couple of years, and, you know, gave us kind of a little bit of a head start of kind of what we're looking to do. So we started with township staff and kind of sat down and, you know, looked at what we could potentially do with the property and what it was currently zoned for, which is our one residential, which is, it's point eight units per acre, so, but roughly one-acre lots. And then we looked at saying, hey, if we did an active adult neighborhood, what would that look like, feel like, and kind of go through there. Township staff and a little back and forth and looked at it and, and, you know, just said, hey, you know, we'll, we'll kind of see what happens and, and kind of put it in front of the planning commission, the board, and kind of sit down with the neighbors. So after we met with the township staff, we did start to meet with some of the neighbors. There's two neighbors, neighborhoods that are most affected by the site. One is the Villas of Shady Brook, which is directly south, which in a little bit I'll, I'll point it out. You know, so they had some, you know, concerns and stuff that we kind of went through with them. And then the second is, is the Silver Lake neighbors, which is, you know, 10,000 square foot, single-family lots. We got a chance to meet with the Villas of Shady Brook once in a big meeting that had about 120 people there. And then we met two separate times with the Silver Lake neighbors, as many as, you know, kind of came out that we had the meetings. Some emails back and forth. We got a chance to meet at a couple houses at Silver Lake to be able to kind of look and feel and touch and kind of figure that stuff out. Mainly to just kind of say, hey, if this is what we're looking to do, kind of the thoughts, pros, cons, and all the normal stuff. And after I go through the plan, I, I have a list of some of the concerns that they have, and I'm sure at public comment, they'll have their own kind of thoughts on some of that stuff. But our ultimate goal is to kind of learn what we learned from, from Stone Farm and come up with a plan that we think the township would, would like to see, that we think the neighbors could say, you know, and we always get that nobody ever wants development compared to having an open field. But if we could come up with a plan that, you know, could benefit the township, could benefit the neighbors, ultimately benefit the Flemings, and it comes back and looks good and feels good and generates tax dollars and all the other stuff, that's ultimately what we're trying to do. And that's why, you know, this first phase of this is literally just to get as much feedback as we can, learn from it. We've already started making changes to the plan, which you'll see in the next like six to eight weeks. And then our next process after the meeting tonight is kind of go back, literally restructure it, and then sit down with the, you know, Villas of Shady Brook, sit down with the Silver Lake neighbors. There are certain neighbors that are more affected than others, so those we'll spend more time with. But ultimately, hopefully get a, you know, come up to a meeting like this where if the township's in support of it, that the neighbors could come and say, hey, like, you know, is it perfect? No. But is it, is it a really good plan that we feel good about, that we could support? That's ultimately what we're looking to do. The first question that kind of came up is why active adult? A couple of key reasons. One, the Villas of Shady Brook are, are just south of the site, so the zoning kind of matches up to it. It's about three units per acre. Even Silver Lake, which is market-rate singles, they're about 2.45 units per acre. What's currently on the plan right now is roughly about 161 units. It's 135 carriages, 26 single families, which is roughly 2.99 units per acre, but roughly three units per acre. So we felt from that standpoint, the, the zoning just being kind of next door was, was kind of a win. Based on Stone Farm and what we learned, we decided to, you know, go age-restricted with the thought process, less traffic, less school-age kids. You know, the neighborhood itself compared to a single-family neighborhood would generate about 2.1 million in additional tax revenue between the school district, the township, and, and the county. And I know- And I know that's not what's always driving stuff, but as far as if you look at the overall scope of the township, the Villas of Shady Brook has 300 units in there. If you went on Bright, which is the MLS today, they'll show that they've had two settled in the last 90 days. They have six or seven pended, but out of 300 homes, there's nothing currently on the market, which is pretty unusual. So however you look at it with housing, there's definitely a housing shortage, especially in age-restricted. The last point is if you look at kind of the aging of America, and I actually have the exact number, because it's almost like astonishing when you look at it, but roughly 38 or 33.5% of residents in Pennsylvania are 55 or over, which ends up being like 4.8 million people. So if you look at the population graphs and where people are, Pennsylvania is historically top three, four, five oldest states in the U.S. So there's just the number of people in that like 55 to 75 range that are looking for, whether it's a new home or resale or first-floor owner suite, there's just a lot of those. And as those people move up to the next house, that obviously opens up the housing of the, you know, single-family houses that are 10, 15, 20, 30 years old, that whether it's a young family or someone moving up to their next house, could kind of move up to it. So it's kind of a natural progression that way.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said some homes have already been purchased? They've been settled or no?
No, nothing, yeah, yeah.
How do you know if it's going to be coming from our area and opening up? Is that like a trend that you're seeing? How do you, how can you say that?
So typically from our, what we call active adult neighborhoods, most of the buyers, when I say most, like 80%, come within about five miles. What I was just trying to show is that the Villas of Shady Brook, which is obviously connected to it, which is age-restricted, those are quads. It's very unusual, if you look at any neighborhood, anywhere in Bucks County, Chester County, Montgomery County, anywhere in Pennsylvania, that you'd have a neighborhood that has that many homes and nothing on the market. It just tells you there's a lot of demand and there's just not enough supply to reach it. So if it's okay, I'm going to probably take this and just kind of run you guys through the plan real quick. And just to kind of orient it where we're at, if you kind of picture the 777 office buildings right here, township line kind of runs down through here. Villas of Shady Brook is all through here, and then Silver Lake is everything that you have through there. So what we overhave is Eco Park, as you kind of come in, that's the pond that's currently at Shady Brook now. We would just look to make that look even better, tie all the trails to it. The main entrance off of township line would kind of come right down through here. You come in a roundabout as you come in the neighborhood, clubhouse, swimming pool, a couple paddle courts. Dave Fleming is, his home would be right here. And then as you walk, kind of get back a little farther in the neighborhood, you see all the carriages would sit in here. The carriages are roughly 34 feet wide by about 75 feet deep, is what we proposed, kind of from a footprint. And then the 26 single families are tucked a little farther in the back. You can see the creek that naturally runs through the neighborhood that can, goes back into Silver Lake on the other side. Our thought is we'd have the trail that kind of runs through that to be able to tie it all the way through. John, will you switch to the community gardens? This is a neighbor that we built with my previous builder in coastal Delaware. It had a community garden that had it for all the neighbors to, and it was an age-restricted neighborhood for all the herbs and different things for vegetables and for the neighbors to plant. We envisioned something very similar to kind of tie into the whole Shady Brook, the look, the feel, and the farm, and kind of keep the history of that. But the thought is to have kind of like working vegetable gardens in the neighborhood, we thought would be kind of fun. Have you switched back, John? So that's kind of what we saw through there. And then our thought kind of this way, and it's still kind of a little bit of a work in progress, which when we come back in six, eight weeks, we'll hopefully come up with something a little different. But it's Stone Farm. We had talked about doing wildflower meadows. You see kind of one picture at the top. That's actually from Penswood Village, right there off of 413, just south of the George School. That's an actual picture from that neighborhood. So we tried to give you an idea of that, tried to give you an idea of what the multi-use trails would look like as well. Switch down one time, John, for me. So that's actually a picture, but the thought is figure out ways to put kind of little wildflower meadows kind of throughout the neighborhood. And this is kind of our envision of what it could potentially look like. This is also Penswood, so another area in the township, but what we thought the neighborhood could look like.
Would that be maintained by an HOA or?
Yes, it would be an HOA. So all the ownership for this neighborhood would be footprint ownership, which means snow plowing, all the lawn maintenance, all the roads would all be taken care of the HOA. The owners would own the foundation and the footprint of the house, and then everything up, everything else would be maintained by the HOA.
Wouldn't be able to do any pools or sheds or anything like that? No more taking away appropriate space?
Yep, no, nothing, nothing else. Everything would be controlled by the HOA. Okay. Any general questions on the plan or thought process on the plan before I go into the houses?
No, and so you've started the process of meeting with the residents from these other communities, and, I mean, can you just give us some sense of, you know, feedback that you're getting and, you know, type of response and what kind of direction that's been taking you in?
Yeah, no, that's perfect. So a couple, and I'll start with the Villas of Shady Brook first, and then I'll switch over to Silver Lake. So the main access is going to come off of township line here into the neighborhood. We had a secondary access coming down here and then out to township line road, a little farther south, which would be kind of our second access. When we did this, the thought was that kind of got us an access out onto the Middletown Township side. This access would be the Lower May side. So we were, you know, for a couple of different reasons, we were hopeful to get an access off the Middletown Township side. The Villas of Shady Brook, to say they hate that road there would be an understatement. They do not want a road there, mainly because it gets so close to the proximity to the homes that are kind of along there, right along township line, which we understand. So we've already started the process to be able to kind of take this road straight out and then actually have it come out north of the 777, which Shady Brook already has kind of a farm access road there now. The, I'd call it a problem, but then you'd have two accesses out of Lower May and technically nothing out of Middletown Township, which you would just have to work through with Middletown and Lower May if they'd be okay with it. But from that standpoint, that was, the Villas of Shady Brook, that's their biggest issue, but I'm pretty confident we'll be able to work through that. The second thing for the Villas of Shady Brook is when John McGrath Senior built all these quads, you know, 20 years ago, he did a really nice job of buffering it, or the township required him to buffer it, but there's a fair amount of trees, there's decent berms, and they've done a nice job. Having said that, we need to do a much better job of adding additional landscaping all through here, all through here, and then all through here to buffer the Villas of, you know, Shady Brook, just to, so they're not looking at us and we're not looking at them, you know, from an overall standpoint that way.
What is that buffer right now between the homes, the two homes?
It's, so it's actually probably right here and right here. This area has a little better berm than this area does. This is probably a little bit thinner here, and then this here, there's almost, you know, we met with, I think this is Ted here, there's kind of the apple orchard kind of sits right here now, but we'd have to do a lot here, and then we'd have to do a lot here. We had ended up meeting with, Megan was here, we met with Tom here, and then we met with James here, you know, because he has some water issues here. So we do have a pretty good feel of kind of what this is. One of the parts of us when we come back in the next time is we want to figure out a way to do something different with the units here and here, to be able to give those people more of a buffer, because one of the big public comments at the planning commission was just like, hey, I bought this property because I moved out of the city and I want, you know, more open space, and I don't want to look at somebody's, you know, deck or somebody out grilling on their property. So we get it. So part of our thought is when we come back in the next time, we want to figure out a way to do something here and here to give these people more buffer so that, you know, just a little bit more separation, hopefully to keep everybody happy that way. So we talked about the access road, we talked about the different buffers. The trails are, the trails are a pretty healthy discussion, back and forth. If you remember when we did Stone Farm, there was a thought at one point, we'd be able to go from Newtown Borough to the George School, the George School to Stone Farm, Stone Farm to Core Creek. We were thinking when we first looked at this, we're like, okay, hey, you could probably go Wegmans to Shady Brook, Shady Brook to Farm's Edge, Farm's Edge to Core Creek that way. And, you know, so when we did it, we're showing, okay, hey, you have the trail kind of coming through the whole neighborhood, possibly come out here with emergency access, put the trail out this way, and then come out this way. But we've definitely got a lot of education from some of the Silver Lake neighbors for a couple of different reasons, like where we thought maybe that might work, because it was township ground, that's where they use for stormwater, probably wouldn't make sense to make a trail there and water run into the creek. And so we had learned at one of the earlier meetings, I think from Mrs. Morelli, that there's a commission that Middletown's going through now with parks and open space. There was a meeting in January, there's another meeting in March. We'll plan to be there for that, so we could kind of figure out how this could kind of work with the overall plan. I don't think anyone's against trails in general. It's just I think some residents don't love the idea of maybe having a trail too close to their house, or proximity of maybe, you know, high school kids from Core Creek walking back by their house or their swimming pool or anything like that. So the thought of, hey, potentially riding your bike with your kids and maybe going up to one of the restaurants or with whatever Shady Brook ends up doing with their property in the future, there's some really cool opportunities with that. So from that standpoint, the thought is, you know, the idea of the trail I think is great. I just think there's going to be a lot of discussion between the township with all the parks groups, and then obviously with the neighbors, to make sure that we put it in a spot that kind of makes sense. And, you know, even kind of like from a global conversation, a lot of the Silver Lake residents and even a couple of the Villas of Shady Brook would love to have some kind of trail or some kind of access, which obviously wouldn't be on our property, but south of the Villas of Shady Brook, which I think is at Village Drive, yeah. So we're committed to figuring out some kind of connectivity with that, to maybe do something kind of fun and, you know, that could be a win for the township, hopefully a win for the neighbors and kind of figure some of that stuff out.
Sorry, how many residents have you been connecting with or speaking with?
So the Villas of Shady Brook, probably about 110 people came out that night. At Silver Lake, I think between the two meetings, we probably had 75, 80 people between the two meetings. There's been probably, at Silver Lake, there's been probably like five or six that we've talked to a bunch and kind of met at the property and looked at it. And if you really look at it from the Silver Lake, you have nine houses here, and then you have the, kind of the four or five houses here. Everybody else down here kind of backs to the Villas of Shady Brook already. So there's 13 at Silver Lake that are definitely a lot more affected than anybody else. So out of those 13, we've probably met with five or six of them, you know, kind of walking through that. Our thought process is the next process is with engineered plans and really looking at it, we'll get into a lot more kind of detail, because the other thing we committed to both neighborhoods was, once we get to kind of the engineered plans and looking at where houses are going to go, we'll stake out where the houses are going to go, we'll show where all the landscaping's going to go, we'll do the headlight analysis to make sure that, because all the stuff that we learned from Stone Farm, just try to be proactive and ahead of it a little bit here.
Thank you.
A couple of the other just kind of big things, stormwater. Tom Morelli right here has a really bad stormwater issue. So that's something that we feel very confident we can make that a lot better for him. James, who's here tonight, has some stormwater issue here. So his big concern is, you know, is the homes are built and water goes into the creek, and then how that works when the water gets to the creek on his side. So as we work through all the engineering and the plans and stuff like that, we understand they're big issues and we just have to be able to address them and feel confident that we're, you know, not going to make it worse, but obviously hopefully make it a little bit, little bit better. But whether it's anybody up here, anybody down here, there's a little bit between 777 and the Villas of Shady Brook. Sometimes I think that, with a heavy enough rain, I think that holds some water. So we'll probably need to figure some of that stuff out. The emergency access, so right now Silver Lake, the road kind of dead ends right here, and then it's just grass into Shady Brook. The thought process is we were thinking to put the emergency access there. Some of the Silver Lake residents didn't love the idea of that, mainly with the initial concern was, hey, there's going to be a bunch of construction traffic through there, which there wouldn't be any construction traffic through there. It would only be used for emergency vehicles. I think there was some concern too, that if there was any kind of road there, the view looking out wouldn't be as great, because you couldn't plant it or landscape it. And, you know, James had kind of brought up one thing here, saying, hey, if my house is right here, I have this beautiful view when I'm looking out my kitchen window out this way, and now if that road's there, the planting's there. So that's something we'll have to figure out. One Silver Lake resident brought up a really good point that we hadn't even considered. Silver Lake has, you know, two exits, one off the village and then one off the other road this way. But if you look at it, most of the people that live here, if this road here, if there ever was a fire, if there was a reason why people couldn't get through, they would be, trapped probably isn't the right word, but they would have a hard time getting out. This emergency access could actually probably work both ways. I'm not saying we have to do it for that, but it could be a potential win for the Silver Lake residents if for some reason anything ever happened that way. So from that standpoint, this is something that we would just, as we go through the engineering and the neighbors, we would just have to talk through. If there's a way we could do something different with our exits off of township line that maybe eliminates that, we'd love to be able to talk to the fire marshal for it. We just don't know until we sit down with township staff and consultants and kind of figure that stuff out. So we know it's an issue, we know we have to figure it out, it's just something probably going to get worked out in the next couple of months. Yeah, and then probably two other things is, you know, with everything going on here, with stuff going on in Lower Mayfield, how does that affect the traffic on township line in Stony Hill and, you know, which obviously with all the traffic studies and everything that we figure out that we need to do, we're going to have to kind of work through that, but traffic is always a huge thing that way. And then the last kind of, I would say big, but is just construction and, you know, you got to put in the streets and the site work and then build homes and everything and just the disturbance on the neighbors and the dust and the headlights and the times of day that things are working. So that's just something that we'll kind of work through as we kind of go through the process. So those were kind of the, what I would call the biggest neighbor issues. I'm sure there's a couple more that I'm forgetting, but those are some of the bigger ones.
I do appreciate that you've taken this approach. It's always helpful when developers do this, getting out in front and meeting with the residents, they're going to be most impacted, because I think we've experienced over the years, is you do tend to find a lot of common ground when you work that way. And I know you're sort of in the middle of the process and you're still figuring a lot of this out, and there's a lot of work to be done. But I think, you know, starting that way rather than, you know, when you're already fully engineered and presenting plans, and then you're trying to undo things, it makes it more difficult. So I appreciate on behalf of our residents that you've taken the time to meet with not only resident groups, but even go so far to go out to individual property owners and walk the land and talk about solutions. So that's appreciated. I wonder, I know this isn't necessarily your project, maybe Mr. Murphy can comment, but can you say anything about what the sort of broader picture is for the Lower Mayfield part of this whole thing, so residents have a sense of, you know, where this project fits in to what the vision is for the whole property? I don't know how much of that is, you know, fully planned out yet or how much you can comment on.
We're probably a little further ahead here in Middletown than we are in Lower Mayfield. We haven't yet started the process in Lower Mayfield, other than we've had a singular staff meeting. We are attempting to schedule other staff meetings in the coming weeks, hopefully shortly, where we can start to flesh out the other component parts of Shady Brook that are being acquired. There is the central- There is a, the central piece of Shady Brook is going to be retained by the Fleming family, the other outlying pieces that are in the yellow, E crew and blue areas. The blue piece on the map is the portion of the site that today is owned by Jefferson, not by Shady Brook. But the E crew or pink piece, and the two yellow pieces are other pieces of Shady Brook that are being acquired by the DeLuca organization, that are going to be possibly a mirror image of what is on the west side of Township Line Road, where Wegmans and the apartments are. We have shirets that we've had prepared, but like suggested possible development pods in those areas, but nothing has been formalized, and we're hoping, hopefully this spring now to start a more public conversation about it, but that's where things are at the moment.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so before you move on to the actual units, are there any other questions for Mr. Morrissey or Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I'm sure you know where I'm going. So, this is zoned R1. It's one of the most kind of restrictive from a standpoint of development, right? So, I think if I remember correctly, it's 20% building coverage, 70% open space, something around there. So, what are we looking at right here, from like coverage and impervious?
So, I don't remember the impervious off the top of my head, but it's roughly 35% open space is what, what we have. When we lotted out the plan, so if you took the, you know, 53 acres times 0.8, I think you get like 42 or 43 units, if you look at really, once you throw in stormwater and streets and stuff like that, you're probably going to end up with like 35 to 39 single-family homes, all kind of, but all straight lotted out. The only thing I don't know for sure, which John might know, would there be an open space requirement, where if it's all lotted out, it's straight, it's just big lot, single families?
There's not a defined percentage in the order mix of the open space in the R1.
Right. But, and I do remember, because I think even for Stone Farm, I know the thought of more single families, the, the better. This, I do think from an open space standpoint, and we're just a little over 35%, I think when it's all said and done, that number's going to grow a little bit, because the plan's going to change a little bit. The natural area in the middle where you have the creek is the natural place for the open space, which is kind of where we, you know, put it, with the thought of, you know, being with the beauty of the trails and the trees and everything that go through it. But, the plan's going to get a little better than what you see now with the open space, but, you know, ultimately it was, Stone Farm was 88 single families that the residents just didn't want it, because of the traffic and the school age kids and all the other stuff that goes with it. And, you know, we ended up, you know, kind of coming up and doing active adult, we never went into Stone Farm and, you know, looking like we were, wanted to do active adult. At the end, it obviously all worked out, but...
Right, this is, this is not Stone Farm, right? Because that was, that was a win-win for everyone, I think. It was, you know, 160 acres, and we developed 60 of it. So, you got, you got a lot out of it, we're not, we're not talking about the same thing here. What is, what is the, the thought process behind not building single family here, how it's zoned, and coming in with just a, for right plan?
It's, so, most of the buildings that Fox Lane does is, is by right, single-family lots, quarter acre, half acre, one acre, two acre, it's the core part of our business. On a site like this, and when you look at kind of population trends and all the other stuff that goes with it, and like I said, when you look at the Villas of Shady Brook, it's, the thought of having a 300-unit neighborhood with not one house on the market, I've been doing this 28 years, I've, I've never seen that before, and I said the same thing at the planning commission when it came up two weeks ago. But, it goes back to if, the trade-off when you look at between a, you know, single-family neighborhood versus a kind of an active adult neighborhood, it's, it's okay, how many school-age kids, you know, how much more traffic does it get? Even with the age restricted, even though there's more units, when you look at the traffic counts and stuff, even with the, you know, the change in numbers, from the time of day that, you know, the, the active adult buyers leaving their house, or coming home from their house, or the number of times, it just ends up being a, a, a win for the overall traffic. Thought process behind it, the no school-age kids, and then when you look at the potential tax dollars between the two of it, it ends up being, you know, a, a, a fair play for a township to look for the impact that the neighborhood could potentially have, you know, on the township. So, like I said, that's your decision to make as a, as a board, and I'm not, but that's when we look at it. Could you build single families here and do it? You're probably selling homes close to $2 million bucks, is probably what's going to happen. And I'm not saying that's...
And what are we selling, what would you be selling these for?
So, if that's okay, John, let me just show you real quick. So, the carriages, we would probably start in the mid to high nine, or eights, and probably finish up in probably the mid to high nines. The single families would probably start around 1.1 million, and probably finish up right around 1.2 million.
Yeah, I just think it's another, it's another plan with high density. That's what I'm seeing, right? And, again, I know, I know I've received pushback from residents, I hear it on the podium all the time of, of that, that desire not to have high density, leads to traffic, leads to all, you know, a bunch of more issues. So, yeah, I would have liked to have preferred to see a much lower density development.
No, and that's totally fair, and some of the Silver Lake residents said the same thing, it's like, you know, everyone always wants less density, which I'm glad...
Yeah, we get it, it's going to get developed, right? But, I think that's the thing.
The only thing that I was saying, and probably learned more so over the last couple of years, and probably the most when we did Stone Farm, though, we're looking at this, and like I said, the density is definitely going to be less when we come back in front of you the next time, it's just kind of like, what's the, what's the right number that kind of makes sense? But we are trying to look at it from a bigger picture, and like, okay, are there other things we can do that you're like, okay, hey, for the extra couple of units, it allows them to do these, whether it's the trail, the connectivity, whether it's the open space, whether it's a park for the township, like, we get that we got to come in with a plan that makes sense for the township, and that the neighbors like, we, I get it. But, there's always kind of like the, the trade-offs to try to come up with a plan that like, you're not going to make everybody happy all the time, but if I can make most of people happy most of the time, then we know we have a pretty good plan. And what I would tell you is, if you just give me like six to eight weeks for us to kind of tweak this and come back with like, some different ideas and some different thought process, I'm not saying you're going to love it the next time, but I think you'll like it better than what we did here the first time, because this was kind of our, our first blush.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate all of the work that you put into this, like Super Elder Kizak said, working with the residents, going above and beyond before it gets to us that you're, you're doing these conversations. So, I just want to thank you. We came out with something really, you know, favorable on Stone Farm, so I'd really like to get to somewhere close to this here.
No, I totally agree, and the one thing I, I will tell you, and I, I might not have mentioned this, so, one of our partners in Fox Lane, who actually runs our Pittsburgh group, is a guy named Eric Nickel, who lives in Newtown Borough. His sister is, is actually married to Dave Fleming, so, part of the, you know, we always want to build beautiful neighborhoods that, you know, the township loves, and, but this probably has another level to it, and we are committed to figure out a, a neighborhood that would be really special, that when you're driving through it, and the neighbors are driving, like, they're like, okay. And I will tell you, most of our neighborhoods, when I'm in township meetings and back and forth and densing and stuff like that, and then we open up the neighborhood the first time, and the models and stuff, 99% of the time, even our most harshest critics come back and they're like, wow, this, this is great, like, this is pretty impressive. So, I can't guarantee anything, but I'm comfortable that we'll come back with a plan that I think...
Yeah, definitely. And again, I, I grew up in Silver Lake, so I know it pretty well, so again, the trails are definitely one of the things that I, I had noted, you know, you have to go next to essentially people's houses, in order to get those trails, so we need to figure that out, to make sure that we're, we're continuing to keep those residents, giving them the privacy that they need.
Yep, and, and we're, we're working behind the scenes, trying to figure out some other scenarios to be able to do something different with the trails.
Other questions, comments before we let you move on?
Okay, so I'm, I'm at the end. So, just want to kind of give you an idea of what the potential product could look So, this is the very similar neighborhood that we built in White Marsh Township, it's a Blue Bell address, right at the corner of Skipback Pike and Butler Pike. This is our, the two homes at the, at the left are model homes, so the, one on the far left is our Provence, the one just to the right of that is our Santa Barbara. One on the left has a first-floor owner suite, the one, the other side has a second-floor owner suite. The models did have the option, if someone wanted to do an elevator, they were, you know, 10-foot ceilings on the first floor, you know, two-story family rooms, cathedral ceilings. John, maybe just kind of scroll through a little bit. On the end units, we always kind of enter from the side to, you know, kind of make it not look as much as a townhome, and a little bit more kind of like a carriage. We use all real stone, we use cement board, we use kind of Anderson 400 windows. This is the kitchen in our Provence, so that just kind of gives you a quick rundown of the kitchen, the family room. The owner's bedroom is just to the right, as you kind of go through there. This is the kitchen on our Santa Barbara, same thing, kind of standing back at the kitchen, looking out into the kind of dining area, family room, once again, 10-foot ceilings. It was interesting, we were concerned in this neighborhood that we'd have a hard time selling the interior units, but people liked this model so much, we sold, at the end of it, you had to sell just as many of these as you did the end units, but we sold these just as fast, if not faster than our end units, which has never happened before. This is the owner's bedroom of the Santa Barbara, you know, ceiling there is probably 16 feet. Owner's bedroom for our Provence, which is the first-floor owner suite. Luxury owner's bath in the Santa Barbara, with kind of a big shower, soaking tub, dual vanities, big closets. And the one thing with this product is, even though people are downsizing, they're really not downsizing the, the house, they're downsizing, having to cut the grass, the, you know, pick-up sticks, snowplow, any of that stuff, but they still want a really nice house on the, on the inside. So, this is showing the, the basement in the Santa Barbara, once again, nine-foot ceilings. We showed the model with a, like kind of a faux golf simulator in the back, just to kind of give people an idea of what it could, but a lot of space, if you have your grandkids over, this is the basement. We had bought this property from the Carabots, who own the Caremore Winery in Blue Bell, so we did kind of a wine tasting room in the, in the basement. So, all of them come with unfinished basements, but then you could choose to have a finished basement afterwards. And then the outdoor living, which is, which is a big deal. So, that's actually a real working wood-burning fireplace, that's actually been designed to actually go on a deck, which a couple of years ago, they didn't do it, now there's ways to do it. And then the outdoor living on the Santa Barbara, next to it. So, most of the way we design homes now is because you spend so much time living on the back of your house, most people don't want to be out on their deck and have somebody right next to them on a deck, so we try to interchange the covered porches on the unit, so you have some separation, where if somebody was on the Santa Barbara and at their dining room table, and then people were next door on their deck, you have a little bit of separation where you're not listening on each other's conversation. So, just something as the, as the products evolved over the last couple of years, and that's just kind of a close-up of that. So, that's pretty much the majority of it, and like I said, we weren't looking for any kind of vote, we just wanted to kind of get this in front of you for, get a chance to see it. We feel now that we kind of talked to township staff, we've heard a lot from the neighbors and a lot of good back and forth, we heard from the planning commission two weeks ago, and, and then obviously whatever feedback you guys have for us. And then, over the next probably three or four weeks, we're gonna, we're actually meet with the, the Silver Lake HOA board again next week, and then we'll set something up with the Silver Lake neighbors probably the week after that, and then we'll work with our engineer, play around with some stuff, and then hopefully be ready to resubmit with something we feel even better about over the next, like, probably five or six weeks.
Any other questions? We appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, the next agenda item is consideration of authorizing advertisement of a temporary sign ordinance. Mr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kizak. So, I'm bringing this to the board's attention, we've been made aware of a recent case in Pennsylvania that affects our sign ordinance, so what I'm asking the board tonight is to authorize me to draft an advertising ordinance that'll bring our current sign ordinance into compliance with what this recent case law said. So, court in Pennsylvania has recently ruled that sign, or sign ordinances cannot have differing regulations or standards for temporary signs based upon the content of the sign. Middletown Township's sign ordinance currently kind of has different regulations for real estate signs, political signs, opinion signs, grand opening signs. So, what we want to do is basically create a single category of temporary signs that would regulate all of those different types of temporary signs.
And, so the ordinance would regulate what? Where those signs can go, how long they can be put up?
Yeah, the size of the signs, where they can be placed, how long they can be up for. I haven't determined those specific regulation yet, I'm going to work with the director of building and zoning, township manager, and I'm going to look at other ordinances to figure out what they need to be, because frankly, I'm not a fan of this case, because I think some different types of temporary signs should have different regulations, but that's not what the case says. So, so I'm going to kind of come up with the best game plan of how to figure out those regulations.
So, basically what we would be doing tonight would just be authorizing you to research, draft, and then advertise the proposed ordinance?
Yep, and then I'll bring it, come back in front of you probably in the next couple of months of how we're going to come into compliance.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Esposito? All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor, in consultation with the township manager and director of building and zoning, to draft and advertise an amendment to the sign ordinance to bring all temporary sign regulations into compliance with recent case laws. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Crepple, has been motioned a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass is four zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of appointing Burckheimer as stormwater impact fee collector. Mr. Valla.
Good evening supervisors. As the board might recall, in December, the board adopted a stormwater impact fee. There now has to be a means to collect that fee. Recommended before you tonight is appointing Burckheimer, which is one of, it's already a vendor in use by the township for some of the business taxes in town, where we evaluated several different options, some third-party vendors, the township's real estate tax collector, as well as bringing the service in-house, and in weighing all of the various options, we felt that the most economical and feasible option for the residents would be to appoint Burckheimer. It's, we expect it to be within budget, we do expect this first year just to provide some additional information with the mailers, that would, when the bills go out, as well as expecting a higher volume of additional notices required for this first year, we expect it to come closer to that 50,000 mark, but we do expect on an ongoing basis to be about $32,000, which is within the budget amount of the stormwater fund, so this would be paid for by the fee revenue that would be coming from folks paying that fee. And it's assessed to both residents and businesses, and it's about just shy of 15,000 separate bills that would be going out.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Valla?
Would this be a contract, and how, like, or for a certain period of time, or...
There's not a specific period of time, it would be something that the board would be able to change at any given time, and that is something we're looking at long-term, the feasibility of bringing this in-house.
And this contractor, I guess the benefit is, number one, they're, seems to be the least expensive of the different, the different options, but it also, they, they can accommodate both the residential and commercial for us.
Exactly, the proposed, or the structure of the stormwater fee in the ordinance adopted, it has a flat $60 per year rate for residents, but it's a variable rate, or a tiered system for the commercial properties, and they are able to accommodate that change, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to authorize township staff to execute an agreement with Burckheimer to collect the stormwater impact fee.
Thank you, Ms. Crepple, is there a second?
A second.
Has been motioned a second, any board questions?
I have one question. I see like the in-house billing, it costs a lot of money, what, what is the, what is figured into that cost?
Sure, so there's a few different things, if we were to bring this service in-house, we do not currently bill for any utilities, so unlike some other municipalities that might bill for sewer and have a billing system, the township would have to bring on a new software system just to provide that function, and then you're adding to that the actual staff time, printing, postage, and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, carries four zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of upgraded patrol rifles for the police department. Yes, Captain Feeney.
Good evening. Try to, like I usually do, answer as many of the questions I can predict ahead of time for you. Our current Fleta patrol rifles that we utilize... Our current fleet of patrol rifles that we utilize, Colt M4 carbines, were purchased in 2001. They're simply getting to the end of their useful life cycle at this point. We have failures with them in training, which makes us question the reliability in a practical application. We fired many rounds through them in training over the last 24 years. We have a great maintenance program, which has gotten us a lot more life out of them than you would normally expect, but we just can't maintain them much longer. As you know, patrol rifles are pretty much the standard in law enforcement over the last 20, 25 years, with the active shooter threats and other threats that we face, and we're lucky to maintain that moving forward. We currently have 10 department-owned rifles in various patrol vehicles. Since 2001, when we originally got these 10 rifles, our department size, our fleet of cars, has increased significantly since then, but we've never added additional rifles to that, which causes problems at times. Also, several times a year, we have to take six to eight of those rifles off the street for training, because we don't have other rifles to train with. So we have to take the resource away from the officers on the street for training purposes. Along with the purchase of new rifles, we're also recommending the addition of suppressors, sound suppressors to the new rifles. The sound from a rifle round can cause hearing damage very quickly. We know from experience, it only takes a few rounds, especially in an indoor environment, to cause some level of permanent hearing damage to someone utilizing the rifles. So adding the sound suppressors while we're doing this makes sense to avoid those issues, avoid possible workers' comp claims for hearing damage and things like that. There's also a phenomenon in active shooter situations where officers have difficulty distinguishing between the fire from a suspect and the fire from fellow officers, and the sound suppressors change the sound of the rifle and help an officer to make that determination between friendly fire, for lack of a better term, and suspect fire. So we're requesting to purchase 20 new rifles, Colt M4 Enhanced Patrol Carbines. They'd be equipped with red dot optical sights, similar to the handguns that we purchased last year, and similar to our current patrol rifles also have the red dot sights. We're looking at a rifle that's a slightly shorter barrel, which then when we add the sound suppressor, gives us a rifle about the same overall size as the current ones that we're using. Again, adding the additional 10 rifles because of the size of the fleet gives us a better chance of having that equipment at the scene of an incident where it's needed, when it's needed, by putting more of them on the street. As part of this, unlike the handguns we bought last year, we're not recommending to trade in the current rifles that we have to help offset the costs, but rather to keep them as training rifles for the rest of their useful life, so that we don't have to take rifles off the street several times a year for training purposes. Cost factors on it, the rifles themselves will be $22,771.80. The Aimpoint Red Dot Optics come to a total of $9,074.40. Both purchased from Whitmer Public Safety Group, which is CoStar's vendor for the items. The suppressors themselves are $19,700. That's the lowest bid that we had for that item, for the 20 of them. And then tactical lights and slings to go along with them, a total of $4,007.20. Total cost for the project would be $55,553.40. With the help of Nick and the Township Safety Committee, we're able to secure $10,000 grant from Delaware, excuse me, Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust towards the cost of the suppressors. They provided that money because they're a safety factor and can help reduce hearing damage and workers' comp claims. So the total cost of the township would be $45,553.40. We budgeted $30,000 in this year's capital plan for the purchase of 10 rifles, with the plan to do the additional 10 next year. But we also budgeted $15,000 to start the upgrade on our tasers. That would be a three-year project. In talking to our firearms instructors, our use-of-force instructors, we really can defer the tasers for another year or two. The rifles are really a much bigger priority at this point with their age and the need to replace them. And logistically and training-wise, it's much easier to do this all in one purchase. So what we're asking to do is take that $15,000 that was set aside for the tasers to complete this purchase this year and defer the taser purchase into next year or the year after. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything I didn't already for you.
So basically, the budget allocation of $45,000 for rifles and tasers, it's still the same budget allocation?
It's still the same budget allocation. Yeah, we're just making the rifle purchase now and deferring the tasers till next year.
Okay. Well, as you often do, I think you answered all of my questions with your detailed and thorough presentation, Captain Feeney. But are there any questions from any other board members?
No, you answered all of them. Again, I know we are in a really tough shape with the budget this year, so I just appreciate the amount of work that went into this, to getting the loan, the grant, to, you know, figuring out what's the priority. You know, we're operating in a deficit, so everything helps. So I just want to thank you for coming in on budget.
Certainly, and as we always do, it's really our maintenance program that has caused us not to have this, to spend this money five or 10 years earlier than we did, and hopefully we'll have the same results going forward.
Yeah, and thanks for going over and above on the, you know, the suppressors. You know, it really does make a difference for the officers in the township to make sure that we're looking out for their best interest and their safety.
Yeah, and like I said, we know it only takes a few rounds to cause permanent damage, so.
Other questions? If not, I can accept the motion.
Very thorough, thank you. I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of upgraded Colt M4 patrol rifles and Aimpoint Red Dot Optics. I don't know what to say, H-U-X-R.
Huck Works.
W-O-R-X.
It's not spelled that way, but that's helpful.
I'm sorry. Huck Works, sound suppressors, sling and tactical lights for the police department at the cost of $45,406.20.
Thank you, Ms. Kripal. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Yep.
I support this. This should have been done four years ago, their 20-year rifles. Does the suppressor cost include the stamp?
There is no stamp for a municipality for government purchase. There is no, so what he's asking, if a private citizen buys a suppressor, there's a $200 tax to the federal government for owning that.
From 1934.
Yeah, the municipality for government purchase is not responsible for that, so, yeah.
Hey, I'm in there.
Any other public comment? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Captain Feeney. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing advertisement to rebid the Langhorne Gables Drainage Phase Two projects. Mr. Kessler?
Thank you, Chairman Kezak, fellow board members. The item before you this evening is the rebidding of the Langhorne Gables Phase Two Drainage Project. Just a little bit of a refresher of the limits of this. The Phase One was done in 2020 to 2021, with the idea that a Phase Two would follow. This is in the Langhorne Gables neighborhood. The goal is really to establish and install stormwater infrastructure in parts of this neighborhood, the majority of which has no infrastructure with pipes and storm drains whatsoever, and has experienced flooding issues for quite some time. This has been mostly designed to this point. It's been bid out twice before. We've met with residents, with public meetings, and had discussions on the design over the course of the previous biddings. So the project had remained on the shelf, so to speak, due to just a lack of available funding with the township's budget. With the grant that was received for this project, which is a PA H2O grant in the amount of $744,000, as well as the establishment of the stormwater funding that the township is now putting in place, this project has always been listed as a priority one for that neighborhood, and it's being requested to bid out again with the goal of awarding, hopefully with favorable pricing, and have constructed as soon as we're able to line up an awarded contractor. The limits of the Phase Two, just to quickly go over the project limits, it's Longview Avenue from Buttonwood Avenue to Jefferson. It includes the connections of the side roads, Willow Avenue, Adams Avenue, and Jefferson Avenue on the side that's towards Trenton Road. There is also two alternates that would be a part of the bid package if the pricing came in within the budget that we're looking to have everything built. Alternate one would look to improve the stormwater between Clay and Fur Avenue. Alternate two includes improvements of additional portions of Adams Avenue, where it intersects with Harrison and connects with Jefferson. So all these areas have been, you know, a priority to try to improve the drainage infrastructure in this project, would look to do so. It would come back before the board, obviously, once it's bid with the recommendation and once we see the pricing come in for consideration before it would be awarded.
Any questions for Mr. Kessler?
Can you walk us through, can you walk us through how you've kind of prioritized the base versus the alternative one and two? I know, you know, going back to those resident meetings, we had residents coming in and talking about how they have to use a pool pump in their backyard to get, they've been rescued from their house from, by the fire department because water goes into their garage on Clay Avenue. So will this start to address, like, are we starting high and starting to address that, or are they very different issues?
It would, yeah. The purpose is to really start to address those recurring issues that they experience. And the base bid really focuses on those portions of the neighborhood that has no storm drainage really in the roads at all. So the water will find its way to kind of the easiest path, which in most cases would be into a basement, or, you know, if someone's driveway slopes towards their garage, that type of thing. This doesn't solve all the water issues, obviously, of major storms, but it's going to provide that infrastructure so the water can get out. It will look to, you know, properly drain it during most common storms, and then if there are larger ones, it gives that path for the water to have a system to actually exit the neighborhood in a controlled manner, rather than the water finding its way. The alternates, Clay and Fur has been the longstanding issue there, so that's why that's listed as alternate number one. The alternate two, with those portions of Adams, Harrison, and Jefferson, there is some infrastructure there. It's severely undersized from when it was built decades ago. So that's looking at an improvement. They have a little bit there now, but, you know, hopefully budget permits to allow all of the basin alternates to be in one package. But as we've looked at the stormwater funding and how it is looking to be set up going forward, obviously, we'll stay within a budget that makes the most sense for the township each year. And then hopefully, if there's, I would say hopefully, but unfortunately, if not everything can be done at once, it'll look to, you know, look as a project maybe down the road a little bit to make sure we can still address those issues.
Do you have, like, I know this is a crazy question, any kind of timeline, like, once we get a, an estimate back, or a bid back?
Typically, our public bidding process takes about a month, month and a half. And then if the prices come in favorably and it's able to be awarded, it takes about a month to get all the contract documents together. So ideally, this project going out to bid this spring, we'd look to have it at the point where it could possibly start construction this fall. It is a larger scope of a project, so, you know, it'd be a few weeks long, maybe, you know, from the fall into the following calendar year a little bit, until it's all said and done. But we'd look to have the project, the one that we'd be able to start this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, just remind me, so we just did the stormwater bid. Would this fall under that at this point, or would it just be in our budget that we have right now?
This one is designed to be one of the priority projects that would be funded with the stormwater funding, correct?
If we weren't able to do the bidding, if we weren't able to get all of the projects as we would like, we would just, we would look at this again and move it over? For like, is this something the stormwater could take on if we didn't get a favorable bid?
As far as having everything as one project?
Mm-hmm.
Possibly. There are a couple of other priority projects that, with the steering committee, with the stormwater funding, and some other projects around the township with Public Works we've looked at. So ideally, this one's able to kind of all be done in one contract, but we don't want to kind of exhaust the stormwater funding with a single project, too. So we'll have to hopefully see how the prices come in.
Right. I mean, I know this has been...
This is what we have, grant funding.
Right, I was going to say, this has been a project I know we've been talking about for a long time, so hopefully we'll get a favorable bid, but, thank you.
Yes, and I'll point out, too, it is expected with the estimates we have that the grant funding of the 744 should cover hopefully at least half of the total project cost. So it's a significant contribution to making the project happen.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, need a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the Langhorne Gables Phase Two Drainage Project.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing rejection of all bids for the pipeline, pipelining project, and consideration of awarding the contract to Snyder Environmental Services, Inc., in the amount of $160,700, a CoStar's approved vendor. Mr. Kessler, again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The trend of stormwater-related projects, three in a row here. The second before you is the pipelining project, and this is one that we've looked at for a period of time with Public Works. The mission really is to address deteriorating pipes that we have in the township, to repair those with a method that does not require the pipes to be torn out of the ground and replaced with new ones. The reason, you know, that has a few benefits, one is the disturbance, obviously, some of these go under properties that have fences nearby, has other utilities on the ground. And also the cost, it is much more economical to line the pipe if you're able to do that and get a lot more life out of it, rather than the cost to take it out of the ground and put a new one in. The thought process was that we would go about obtaining pricing in two different ways. One would be to publicly bid it. The other would be to investigate pricing through CoStar's. The pipelining method is a bit of a specialty craft, I would say, so there's not, you know, too many companies that do it. But there are occasions where a publicly bid one would come in with better pricing than you would get just with the standard CoStar's. So we went through the process of the public bidding. We received pricing, the low bidder had a quote of $299,139.10. Unfortunately, they were not a company that was local this area. They had some other factors that just didn't meet the requirements that we have for RCO ordinance as well. The second bidder was much higher. They were about $550,000. So that's well above the budget we were hoping for, and really what we estimated is the proper fair price that would be for these locations. With the CoStar's approach, we were able to receive proposal and pricing from the CoStar's vendor, Snyder Environmental Services, Inc. That amount is $160,700. And that is matching budget that the township has, working with staff, that focuses on the maintenance and upkeep of our stormwater infrastructure. So before you is a recommendation to reject the public bids that we received, and also the recommendation to move forward with the CoStar's vendor that we received for the price that fits the budget for that maintenance work. If there was any questions on the locations or any further questions for the project, be happy to answer.
Questions for Mr. Kessler?
No, I just want to thank you guys for looking creatively at this and being able to come up with something where we can use the CoStar's, because it sounds like it saved us a lot of money.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Other questions? All right, I can accept a motion.
I think we have to move to reject the bids, correct?
Yeah, I can make it. So I move to authorize rejection of all bids for the pipeline project and to award the contract to Snyder Environmental Services in the amount of $160,700, a CoStar's approved vendor. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing advertisement of bids for the North Flowers Mill Road Drainage Project. I'm guessing you're coming right back.
Happy to talk about one more. This one is a project that is right outside the door, basically, the intersection of North Flowers Mill Road and... North Flowers Mill Road and Detective Jones Way here. If you're familiar, especially this time of year, if there's water that's going across that intersection, constantly has icing issues, dates back to where there just weren't enough inlets placed at the corners to really handle the water that goes from, if you're looking at the traffic light out of the township building here from right to left. We've been looking at this project with Public Works, identified, you know, the methods to address those issues, install a few storm drains and also some additional piping to connect with the existing inlet that's past the point where all the water's getting frozen and icy. So this location as well is, North Flowers Mill Road is one of the roadways that's been identified for repaving this year as part of the road program. Similar to last year's road program, it's a small drainage project that really addresses issues that not only is a safety hazard when it ices, but with all the salting, the roadway just deteriorates and you'll have the potholes and things that you see along the gutter line there. So this would address those issues before the roadway would be repaved, so the money we spend on the repaving is, is well spent and should last much, much longer than the roadway that's falling apart there now. This, the request tonight, I should say, is for the bidding of the project. Similar to the other requests for bid, this would come back before the board once the bids were opened. The estimate for the project is included here. It's about $140,000 when all is said and done, and that would be coming out of the portion of the budget that is looking at the repaving of the roads, making sure that this one's in proper shape before it would be paved on the surface. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kessler? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the North Flowers Mill Road Drainage Project.
Thank you, Ms. Hand. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
I think that's all for you.
Yes, indeed.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing advertisement of a bid for bus services for the 2025 Summer Recreation Program. Yes?
Good evening. So last year, the Parks and Rec Department started a procedure to put our bus services for the summer rec program out to bid. Over the last couple of years, the costs for the, for buses at the level of trips that we're offering to our 450 children that are a part of our program had gone up since the pandemic. So just to follow the bid process and to control costs, we decided to go out to bid for the first time this past year. So this year, we're just looking to do that once again. Worked out well for us last year as intended, so we're just asking for permission to go out to bid for buses for the summers program.
Any questions for Mr. Graham? All right, I'll move to approve permission to proceed with the public bid of bus services for the 2025 Summer Recreation Program. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of the volunteer firefighter and EMS incentive report on volunteer service tax credit program. Mr. Valla?
Yes, good evening, once again. We talk about it periodically, not certainly enough, this township is served by five volunteer fire companies and EMS squads, over 100 local volunteers serving this township, providing essential emergency services, including over the storms this past weekend. And this is a program that has been going since 2018, providing a $250 stipend to all volunteers approved by each of these agencies. Once again, there's expected to be 112 folks on this list that'll all receive a $250 stipend payment for a total of $28,000. $30,000 is budgeted from the fire fund. This is spread out across four fire companies, Parkland, Pendell, Langhorne, Middletown, and William Penn, as well as the Pendell-Middletown Emergency Squad. I also wanted to report, in 2024, the board enacted a volunteer service tax credit program. State law limits that only to township resident volunteers within those five agencies, and there are 15 residents who took advantage of the real estate tax credit, I'm sorry, 29 who took advantage of the real estate tax credit and 15 that took advantage of the earned income tax credit, expecting that to be about a $19,000 total tax deferment from last year's tax payments. So all told, this is all money going back into the pockets of our local volunteers.
Questions for Mr. Valla?
So it looks like we have about 120 volunteers and 44 took it. Does that say that we have 44 that live within the township and some of those are outside of the township? Or is it just the case that some people just chose not to take it?
Probably both. So only residents of the township are available for that credit, so we do expect that most of the folks who are getting the stipend but not the tax credit do in fact live outside of the township, mostly in the boroughs, maybe some surrounding towns, or they don't own property or work, and so they're not actually paying one or both of those tax forms, but more than likely living outside of the township.
Did we confirm that we just didn't miss anyone? I wouldn't want someone to miss out on a credit when they just didn't know to fill out a form.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've been messaging since, I believe, November to the leadership of each of the five emergency service agencies, and we've received pretty good feedback from all five agencies' volunteers.
So we need a motion to authorize the 2024 programs, is that right?
Yeah, just for the stipend program, there's no need for action on the tax credit portion.
Got it. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize the 2024 Volunteer Fireman and Emergency Response Incentive Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Valla. And that brings us to our Q4 financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Laura Hucklebridge. I am the new Director of Finance here in Middletown Township. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the Q4 results and most of 2024 as well. Please keep in mind that these are preliminary numbers. The audit isn't finalized yet, so there will be some adjustments for year-end accruals that are just normal part of the audit. Let me try and turn this on. There it goes. All right, our agenda, we're going to do overview of all the funds, talk about the general fund, a little bit of capital, and the pension valuations as well for the end of the year. Our overview for 2024, this is all funds except for the investment fund and the capital fund, we'll look at those separately. So we have revenue and expenses, we have our budget to actual. Overall, we did better than our budget, our revenue exceeded budget by $837,000, and our expenses were under budget by 1.6 million. This is just revenue and expenses by quarter. As you see, our budget's on the left and our current 2024 is all the way on the right. Revenue's in green, expenses in blue. Most of our revenue comes in in Q2, that's when we get our largest tax payments in. Most of our expenses this year were in Q3, just based off of timing of projects. I broke out revenue for our top four funds and then kind of combined everything else into the other funds line. So we have our general fund, fire protection, park and rec, and our highway aid fund. I broke this out by quarter so you could see the total revenue that's coming in quarterly. Again, for Q2, we have 48% of our revenue that came in that quarter. Q4, we were down to 14%, but overall, we were above budget by $837,000. Most of this increase is from the interest income, and the income is allocated across all the funds. So you'll see an increase in all of the funds this year because of that increase of $488,000. Expenses, similar schedule here, in Q4, our expenses were 28% of the year, and again, our expenses were under budget by 1.6 million. Because of our fair weather that we had in 2024, we saw a big reduction in our snow and ice removal to budget. That was under by $229,000. We also saw a big decrease in the road program due to scope adjustments that were made, so that was a big decrease, again, of $314,000. Police department saw some decrease as well, and employer benefits. All right, we have the general fund. Here's the general fund balance. We were above budget for revenue and we were under budget for expenses, but we were still at a deficit there of $947,000.
Laura, does that include the million, the transfer from the investment fund?
The investment fund, this is just the general fund?
But it, does it include the transfer that we took from the investment fund to the general fund in those numbers?
It went from investment fund to capital fund. So that's not in here.
So we didn't put anything in general?
No.
Okay.
So that was the overview there. This, these are the top revenue lines, revenue categories from the budget. As you can see, our local taxes is the largest, that's the per capita, the EIT, local state tax, sorry, just local service tax, amusement taxes, that's our biggest line. The interest earnings, as I mentioned before, again, that's going to be very high this year because of all the interest that we had that was allocated across all the funds. The decrease in public safety was due to a reduction in the amount of building, electrical, and plumbing permits that we had in 2024 compared to budget, just the timing of business. Our expenses, again, our top lines there, police services is the largest one, but there was a reduction of almost $270,000 against budget this year. That was due to a reduction in wages and overtime pay. Wages came down because of employees that were out on workers' comp, and so the township's not paying them direct wages during that time period. And similarly, the employer paid benefits that went down by $204,000, that was for police retirement associated as well. This is a roll forward of the fund balance just for the general fund, so I presented 2023 and 2024. As you can see, the net change in the fund balance for '24 was a smaller decrease than it was in 2023 of the 1.4 million versus the 947,000. So although we did have a decrease, we were able to mitigate that slightly compared to the prior year.
And remind me again what that fund balance should be to keep us solvent?
Well, our, it should balance our budget every year. So our expenses were 26 million, so our revenue should have covered that and we shouldn't have any decrease. There was a decrease budgeted for 2024, but the decrease that we actually had is less than the budgeted decrease in the fund balance.
Yeah, but that fund balance, like, it's 10 million now. Should it, I'm guessing we should have a certain amount in there. Can you remind me what that, is it 8 million, 9 million?
If I can just jump in, I think Supervisor Kane is talking about our fund balance policy, which for Laura's first presentation, she might not have that with her. Three months is what GFOI typically recommends, to have three months' worth of expenditures. I think we've always tried to shoot for a little bit more than that.
Okay, I'll make sure to address that in quarterly presentations.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how much more we have before we have to change things.
Well, we have our quarterly expenses and revenues, so we can look at Q1 from 2024. I was all the way back. Expenses for Q1 from the general fund for 2024 were 5.3 million. So we've only got 10, so that's about two months, that'll take us the quarter. So we're, we're in pretty good shape there if it's only three months that we needed. All right, so next, I believe, is the capital fund. And again, here we have our overview, revenue was over budget, that's due to the $2.4 million transfer from the investment fund, and our expenses were under budget. Some of that's related to our, just the timing of projects that didn't occur this year. This is our revenue by source, so as you see, the transfer from investments was 60% of our revenue in the capital fund this year, at the 2.6 million. The rest of the revenue came from state grants and county RDA grants. Our largest completed projects for the year were the Public Works brine building, that was 2.6 million. We put in a new boiler system here at the admin building. We completed the hockey rink at Forsythia Park and new dash and body cameras for the police department and vehicles for both police and public works departments. The fund balance for the capital fund, we did have a decrease of 1.3 million this year, even with the transfer. So right now, that leaves us with a fund balance of just under 4 million. For the pensions, the non-uniform, we have an ending fund balance of 11.3 million, net change of 1 million increase this year, and our one-year rate of return was 10.36. So we had a very good year for 2024 for non-uniform. And again, for the police fund, our ending balance is $53.7 million. We had a total increase of 3.3 million and one-year returns of 10.23%. That's it. Are there any questions?
No, thank you.
For those that don't know, Ms. Hucklebridge is our new Director of Finance, and this, I guess, was your first quarterly financial report, so thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Ms. Hucklebridge? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. We usually do that earlier in the meeting. We moved it toward the end of the meeting because we were honoring Supervisor Payne this evening, so appreciate folks who are here to make public comment on non-agenda items for their patience and bearing with us. So we did have a sign-up sheet. The first individual is Jim Bach.
As, as we get to a late hour, I'll move as long as quickly as I can. I wanted to make a, my name is Jim Bach. I'm at 153 Barley Court in the Silver Lake Development, Middletown Township. I'd like to make a public comment around the proposed Farms Edge development. I wanted to speak about the proposed bike path trail that is being proposed by the Farms Edge Development. I have some serious, there are two serious components to my concern. First, as proposed by Farms Edge, the bike trail would cut through a major stormwater retention basin that serves, that serves approximately two-thirds of the Silver Lake community. This basin frequently overflows the Burns, directing the runoff into the neighboring Brook, and in recent years, sinkholes have developed, further deteriorating the effectiveness of this basin. The poor condition of the core, of the stormwater retention basin is well documented by the watershed implementation plan for Core Creek and Lake Luxembourg, prepared for the Bucks County Conservation District, May 2017. My fear is that any further intrusion into this essential retention basin will certainly have additional negative effects. My second concern relates to the multimodal improvement plan commissioned by the Middletown Township. This plan, in the final stages of community review and input, calls for a side path along Village Road where it would connect and allow access from the Villas of Shady Brook, Silver Lake, and the Lakeview Estates communities, and most importantly, Middletown Community Park. The trail as proposed by Farms Edge would isolate the trail and restrict access from these neighborhoods and the community park. these neighborhoods and the community park. As proposed by Farm's Edge, the path, it looks like their proposed path only enhances the amenities to their new development and doesn't reflect the needs and the planning as put by the, put forth by the multimodal implementation plan by Middletown Township. I only would like to add that Joe in his presentation tonight has been interacting with the community, and we certainly would give kudos to him and his team for working with us. And we'd hope that our concerns and our objections are being heard and are going to be thoroughly reviewed as we move forward with this new proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here, and certainly it's, it's great that you're here this evening when the developers are here. And I can see he was taking notes as you were speaking, and I'm sure there'll be more meetings and more conversations about these issues. So thank you very much. Next for public comment is Jessica Vinseguera.
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Jessica Vinseguera, and I live on Barley Court in Silver Lake. I moved to Barley Court when I was six in 1991. My husband and I, along with our four young children, now also live on Barley Court again. We live four houses away from my childhood home where my parents still currently live. Jim Bach's my dad. It's a very special community, and I feel very blessed to be raising my children on the same street that I grew up on. We always knew that Shadybrook would one day sell their beautiful farmland and that things would change. They always do. We can sympathize with the Flemings for selling their farmland, and we would like to thank them for all the wonderful years that we were able to enjoy their beautiful views and nature in our own backyards. I'd also like to acknowledge Joe and the Fox Lane Group for their outreach to the neighbors. I remember when the Villas at Shadybrook Community were built on Village Road around 2005. There was an emergency access road that was built for their community connecting them to Township Line Road. The Villas were reassured that this access road would never be used for anything other than emergency vehicles during the event of an emergency. Now, here we are 20 years later in 2025, and this emergency access road is potentially being considered to be transformed into a legitimate paved road to give access to another neighborhood. I fear that Silver Lake will face the same fate one day in the future if Fox Lane has granted permission to build an emergency access road connecting into Silver Lake. Silver Lake does not have sidewalks. We don't have a safe place for our children to play, ride their bikes, or even stand safely at their own school bus stop. I'm sure safety is a top priority to the board. There's plenty of acreage remaining on Shadybrook that connects to the bypass and other parts of the Township Line Road. I realize that finding an alternative route would most likely involve crossing into other township's boundaries, Lower Makefield and Newtown, and this would be an additional hurdle for Fox Lane. But this is their burden to bear. Fox Lane and DeLuca need to do more research and find a safer alternative to an emergency access road for their Farm's Edge plan. Chilton Court neighbors already have issues with vehicles trying to use a dead end as an access point to Shadybrook Farm. During the Christmas light show and the summer unwind evenings, there are numerous cars that travel down Chilton Court, exploring ways to access the farm from non-intended access points. There are currently tire marks in the mud there right now from vehicles that illegally use that access point. If this emergency access road is permitted, what safeguards or guarantees will be provided to the Silver Lake residents? I'm not even sure such guarantees or safeguards could realistically be made. The clear solution is going back to the drawing board. At the opposite end of Chilton Court, there is another large parcel of land, about 10 acres. It's pretty reasonable to expect that one day in the future, this parcel of land will also be developed. I'm sure these potential developers will also want to connect into Silver Lake. Once again, this can potentially put Silver Lake in the same situation that the Villas of Shadybrook is currently in now, where their once-promised emergency access road will eventually be considered a viable option for paving. This would transform Chilton Court into a highly traveled thoroughfare one day. All Silver Lake residents should be concerned by this, and we hope the board is too. I'd like to just say, earlier, a question was asked, I'm not sure by which board member, and I believe Mr. Murphy answered it, about clearly labeling what else the plan is for those yellow and those pink areas. I was at the last planning commission meeting, and Tom, I believe the vice chair, had specifically asked for that information. We were told about 150 apartments were going there, possibly a hotel, restaurants, grocery stores, and other storefronts. So we're not just talking about this Middletown Township high-density parcel of land that they're looking to build. There's going to be a lot more other housing that's going to be going in this whole development plan. So please, when considering this plan, please consider the whole plan and not just our Middletown Township section that's being shown on the board and in the map. Thank you for listening. I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think Mr. Morrissey did address specifically the, the access road that you're talking about, and so it sounds like that's something that's being looked into. So appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Okay, next for public comment, Lance Sagers.
I'll wait till next meeting, Mike. I'd be disregarded then.
You sure?
I'm sure, sir.
All right. All right, is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes?
Specific to that, Mike, I, I think you were just rude to Lance tonight, and I just find it unacceptable. He shows up here every, so do I, but you can be as rude as you want to me, I don't care, but he shows up here caring about the Middletown Township, and you, you just, you totally put him down tonight, and I find that unacceptable. You say you guys talk with all these people who show up and that, you know, the social media isn't, isn't a thing, but isn't, isn't, you know, true life, but you all say, well, we talked to all these people who are for, left, right, X, Y, Z, and I don't see them. But I see people like me, I see people like Lance show up. And honestly, I just, I really, I really cringed when you were disrespectful to Lance earlier today. That's, that's what I want to say.
I apologize if I came across disrespectful, and I apologize to you, Lance. I didn't mean disrespect, respect you. I do value your opinion and the comments that you make. What I, what I meant to get across and what I think I wanted to express frustration with is when people come up here and say, everybody thinks this and everybody feels this way, and this is what every resident believes. And I fully support and endorse every resident coming here and speaking on their own behalf and for what they feel and what they believe in, and I respect that we're all going to have differences of opinion on different topics, and that's fine. I was just making the point that that's not true, because we speak, we speak to lots of residents that feel differently. And so that, that was the point I was trying to make. So if I, if I did it in a disrespectful way, then I'm very apologetic to Lance. And again, I hope you continue to come back and share your public comments at our meetings.
I will, sir.
Are there, oh, yeah.
I feel like when I spoke as well, you know, I think I was very passionate about my response, and I, I think it's the same sentiment. We speak to a lot of people, and even though they don't show up here, we still speak to a lot of people and hear their, their version of how they want to live in Middletown. So I think we're trying to represent everybody and hear everybody. But when you do show up, we do want to hear you. So again, I apologize as well if maybe I came off as, I don't know, abrasive is the word, maybe? Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir?
I just have a request. When you guys review the plans for Farm's Edge, if you could just look at the distance between the proposed homes and the homes that are currently there, right now, it's about 100 feet. That's not including the land, right? So that doesn't include the Silver Lake backyards. Most of us feel that that's a little too close. So that's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, that takes us to other business. And I'll start with Mr. Valla.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kessler?
No other official business, just God bless Hannah Payne.
Thank you. Mr. Esposito?
Nothing other than to echo Mr. Kessler's comments, and we will miss Hannah.
Ms. Yoli Coles?
I have nothing.
Ms. Corporal?
Nothing.
Ms. Kane?
I did have something, but I will, it is late and we can continue in next meeting. Just know, one of the things that I've talked to the township about the past few days, I am one of those houses that still does not have power. So I'm trying to figure out what we can do more for residents from a communication standpoint, from a notification standpoint, making sure that we have line of sight on any vulnerable members of the community that may be impacted in future events. So hope to bring that to another meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Hannah?
No, thank you.
I just have one thing. The Nishamani School District actually asked me just to mention that the, the 2024 Nishamani School District Property Tax Assistance Program, they have increased the, they have increased the tax rebate for senior citizens to $35,000. So it used to be that for senior citizens whose household income was $30,000 or less, they could receive a tax abatement or a tax rebate, rather. Now you, if it's, they've increased it to $35,000. So for senior citizens, if your household income is $35,000 or less, you may be eligible for a tax rebate from the Nishamani School District. You can get the forms at the school district website. You can also call the Nishamani School District's business office, and they can provide those for you. So they just asked me to provide that information to the public. But I have nothing further, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.